Okay, we're on the air.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I am Paul Cattigan, Chairman of the Kennybunkport Zoning Board of Appeals, and this is a virtual zoning board of appeals meeting. We are using the Zoom conferencing format. The agenda for the town, the agenda is on the town's website, and that has the information needed for the public to participate by Zoom conferencing format or telephone. If you wish to participate through Zoom, you can join the Zoom meeting. Number that we have for that is 922-9128-4593. You can also dial in by phone on the East Coast at 929-205-6099, or in the rest of the United States at 301-715-8592. You will be asked to enter the meeting ID number, and again, that's 922-9128-4593, followed by the pound sign. If you are conferencing in by phone or through Zoom and watching this on cable or YouTube, you must turn down your volume, or we will have feedback. As always, you can watch us on the television on Channel 1301, or stream us on YouTube at Kennybunkport Television. During the meeting, only the zoning board of appeals and the current participant as selected by the board will be on screen with audio connected. All other participants will be blacked out and audio muted except when the board solicits public input. I ask that the public take turns when talking, allow others the opportunity to talk once you have made your point, and identify yourself when talking. We appreciate your support and patience as we are, we are using this virtual platform for our public meeting process to carry on necessary town business. So I'm going to take the roll call now. April Defoe.
Here.
James Fitzgerald.
Here.
Karen Slager.
Here.
I'm here, Paul Cattigan. And not present at this time is Kevin McDonald, Gordon Mayer, and Wayne Fessiden. So we'll see if those folks join us along the way, but we have four, and four constitutes quorum. So now, Dave, you want to explain to the audience the process and the controls at all, or do you think they've got it?
Well, I can tell you very quickly, if you wish to speak at a time when requested, you can click down on your dashboard at the bottom typically, depending upon what device you're using, and select the option to raise your hand. That will raise a virtual blue hand in the participants list. I can see that you've done this, and then I can allow you to speak.
Thank you. Okay, the process for engaging the applicant and interested parties is going to be as follows. After I've introduced the agenda item, I will request that the applicant, or her representative, to raise their virtual hand. I will acknowledge them and ask for Michael or Dave, right now it's David, to promote them to panelists so that they will be visible to the board. Once they have been promoted to panelists, I will direct them to proceed. After the applicant has presented her case, I will call upon each board member individually to give them the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. And once the applicant and the board have completed this process, I will direct Michael or David, as the case may be, to place the applicant back into the audience. Did we just get joined for a minute by somebody? No. I will repeat the process for abutters to the property. I will ask them to raise their virtual hands and ask for David or Michael to promote them to panelists and allow them to present their case. I will call upon each board member individually to give them the opportunity to ask questions of the abutters. Once the abutters and the board have completed this process, I will direct Michael or David to place the abutters back into the audience. I will repeat the process for the general public. I will ask them to raise their virtual hands and ask for David, I'm going to dump Michael there, David, to promote them to panelists and allow them to present their case. I will call upon each board member individually to give them an opportunity to ask questions of the general public. And once the general public and the board have completed this process, I will direct David to place the general public back into the audience. Once all input has been given to the board, I will close the public hearing portion of this residential rental accommodation request and invite the board to deliberate. I will call upon each board member individually for this. Should the board need any additional clarification of any of the, from any of the interested parties, I'll ask David to promote the party to panelists to allow that clarification. And once completed, the party will be placed back into the audience. Once the board has completed its deliberations, I will ask for a motion. I will repeat who made that motion and who has seconded the motion. I will then call upon each board member individually to register their response to the motion. So that's our process. So at this time, I'm going to introduce the first agenda item. And the first agenda item is Lauren Tenney. Is that the proper pronunciation, Tenney? Lauren Tenney requests approval for residential rental accommodation at her single-family home located at 92 Wilds District Road, Assessor's Tax Map 21, Block 4, Block 12 in the Village Residential District. Now, before we move into the application that's pending, we have two sets of minutes. Is that what you're holding up for me, Karen?
Yep.
There are two sets of minutes that we were provided earlier, and by earlier, I mean a couple of months ago. One set is for the meeting that occurred on March 9th, and the second set is for the meeting that occurred on June 8th. We have four board members here at this time, and on the March 9 meeting, myself, April, Jim, and Karen were all present, so we can all move on these minutes. So I assume you all have had an opportunity to give these a perusal at some point in time?
Yes.
Okay, Jim, you're...
I move that the March meeting be approved.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. I'll do one at a time. Karen?
Aye.
Jim?
Yep.
April?
Aye.
And I, I myself, so those meeting minutes are approved March 9th. Second set of minutes is from the hearing that we conducted on June 8th of this year. Present at that meeting was myself, April, Jim, and Karen, as well as others, so we can act on these minutes as well. Comments on this or a motion?
I move that the minutes, the meeting be approved.
Okay, April, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes as presented for the June 8th meeting? Say aye one at a time. Karen?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
April?
Aye.
And aye, aye it is well, so those are unanimously approved. Now we can move on to the next agenda item, which is the matter of Lauren Tenney and her residential rental accommodation application. So Lauren, could you first start here when you bring Lauren forward?
Hello?
Lauren, hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening.
So this is going to be your opportunity to present your application, which we all got. It's dated September 8th. The letter is dated September 8th. So go ahead, you've got the floor.
Is there anything in particular I should cover? Haven't we not done this before?
Well, most people that come haven't done this before. Why don't you tell us what it is precisely that you'd like to do, and describe the property just a little bit, and then tell us how the property and what you propose to do conforms to the requirements of the ordinance?
Okay. So this is a single-family home with three bedrooms, and then the fourth bedroom is above our garage and is attached to our main home by a playroom. And that space has an en suite bathroom, and I would like to rent that short term on Airbnb. And let's see, what else can I tell you? This conforming conformity of the space is that it is part of my existing home. We use the home during the times when we're not Airbnb, Airbnb, I'm sorry, we use the room as a bedroom when we are renting it out, and I'm not sure what else to say about its conformity. It's a bedroom in my home, basically, that I'd like to rent out.
Okay, do you know the requirements in the ordinance, or we'll be going through them?
Yeah.
We went through them and you can...
I think it would be, yeah, thank you.
And so that's all you have right now. Let's leave Lauren up, if that's okay, so we can start asking any particular questions that any of the board members have. So I'm going to first start with Karen. Karen, do you have any, any questions of the applicant?
The renting of the room does need to meet specific standards to meet that requirement. Does it have smoke detectors? Does it have what kind of kitchen? It cannot have its own kitchen. If you could just maybe describe that to us so we can...
Okay. Sure. So it's a king-size bedroom, which has a countertop with a sink, and it has a tiny undercounter refrigerator, and it has a microwave.
Okay.
And that's what it has in it, and then it has a bathroom with a shower, and it has smoke detectors installed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Jim, do you have any questions of Lauren?
I would think that one of the, the main pieces of the ordinance is that it's really nothing special for entrances and exits and things like that, so these people should be using the same entrance and exit that you do.
Right.
Is that, is that the way it will operate?
It is, yeah. So we have, we enter our home through our garage, so either we pull our car into our garage and then go into our home directly, which is the same door that our renters would use, or we walk in another side door, but it's the same, we, they would use our entrance. Yeah.
Just to follow up on that, so you enter the house through the garage, but then you said side door. Is the side door go into the garage or elsewhere? Enter the house otherwise?
Sorry, yeah, I could have been clear. So, so from our garage, there's a door into our house, and that is the same door that can also go up into the bedroom. Does that make sense?
So in order to enter the house, you go into the garage and then go through the door off the garage into the house?
Yes.
And if I wanted to go up to the second-floor bedroom, I would enter, go into the garage, go through the door that enters the house, but then?
Go left up the stairs.
So that, and the stairs are on the inside of that door after you go into the door?
Correct. That's correct, yes.
There's no separate entrance for this apart, this bedroom?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that good with you, Jim?
Yeah, how about bathrooms? You, is there a bathroom connected to this room?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes, a full bathroom, shower stall.
Okay, April?
So, part of the performance standards is that there can't be any cooking facilities. So are we considering microwave cooking facilities, Werner or Andrew?
Why don't we make it Warner?
Yeah, no, so that, that's a good question, you know, and, you know, it's come up before in terms of what constitutes, you know, what constitutes, you know, cooking facilities, you know. I mean, I'm certainly, you know, I'm interested in hearing, you know, the board's opinion on this because, you know, it probably will come up, I would imagine, at some point. But generally speaking, you know, the ordinance is, you know, it is broad enough so that you could, you could conceive of that a microwave is, you know, is considered a cooking, you know, a cooking facility. You know, likewise, and clearly a sink, you know, meets your, meets the sanitary requirements of a kitchen, you know, but, you know, a microwave, you know, could be construed as a, you know, as a cooking appliance.
Can I respond to that, or no? Is that not helpful?
Hang on a minute. Go ahead, April. You want to follow up?
Well, I mean, I, I think it's a good question. Having a separate sink and microwave kind of reminds me of like a kitchen-y kind of thing, which would allow people to rent this more than for just a night or two. You know, I, I have an issue with that, I guess. I kind of want to feel a little more comfortable with it. My other questions are parking. I haven't heard anything about where the parking spaces would be for the rentals and how many they need, Werner, and do they have the space on their lot for parking?
Yeah, I mean, you know, certainly, you know, Lauren can speak to that, you know, as far as parking requirements for the land use ordinance as it relates to a single-family dwelling, you know, you're required to have two spaces, you know, of which, you know, that can be accomplished with the garage. And so, you know, we have a, you know, we have a permitted two-car garage, which would meet the parking requirements for, you know, for the single-family home. There is, you know, there's certainly a driveway that gets you from Wilds District Road to the garage, and so I think that would accomplish your, you know, the additional parking, you know, that's required for this particular application.
So there is enough room on the lot?
Correct.
There is enough room on the lot, yeah.
Yep, there is enough room for another vehicle, you know, and, and as you all know, you know, the requirements for, you know, the residential rental is that this parking needs to be accomplished on the lot, not off-street, or, excuse me, not on-street, you know, so it needs to all be accomplished, you know, within the bounds of, you know, of the property, and not out in the right-of-way of Wilds District Road.
Correct.
I, I want to follow with you, Warner, on cooking facilities. So if I, what are the requirements, if any, for a rent, a residential unit? Not what we're talking about here, but if I'm constructing and I'm building a residential unit, to qualify as a residential unit, what do I need to show for, do I need to show cooking facilities? And if so, what do I need to show? Do I, and I'm, I'm really thinking about, do I need a stove top or a hot plate or something of that fashion to qualify?
Yeah, now, you know, so it's a good question. I mean, if we were to take this outside of the context of, you know, of this particular application, you know, so if we were to walk into a home, you know, to do a certificate, you know, to do a standard certificate of occupancy, you know, in a regular home, I would tell you that I wouldn't accept a hot plate, you know, sitting on the countertop of, as, as a cooking facility, you know, for a single-family home. You know, I, you know, the expectation would be is that there's a, you know, that there's a regular, you know, that there is, that there would be a stove, or at least a location or provisions made for that, you know, for, you know, for a proper cooking facility. But I, you know, and I, I don't want to get into, you know, whether or not there have been other enforcement actions or case law about, you know, whether a microwave constitutes a, you know, cooking facilities, but, but I do know that, you know, in the past in town, you know, where there have been hotel rooms, you know, that have had, you know, kind of a combination, you know, sink, minibar, you know, microwave, you know, those have constituted, you know, that kind of combination has constituted a, you know, a, a kitchen act, you know, so to speak.
So that has constituted a kitchen act, but if you were looking at a, someone who's looking for a CO for a residential unit, would a microwave, a sink, and a fridge be adequate in your, it sounds like it would not be adequate for your purposes to issue a CO for a residential unit?
Yeah, I, I would be hard-pressed to accept, you know, say, a microwave, you know, you know, a microwave sitting on a countertop is meeting, you know, is meeting the cooking, you know, cooking requirements.
Okay. Do you see where I'm going with that, April?
I do.
Because if, if, if there's a requirement that a residential unit has cooking facilities, and if the, what the applicant has as offering would not qualify theoretically, you know, as a residential unit, because the cooking facilities were inadequate, then where do we go with judging whether the facilities that are offered are greater than what the residential rental accommodations allows? But we can discuss that after. We, that can be part of our discussion.
Yeah, I mean, one of the questions that does come up, you know, is whether or not you're dealing with a, you know, a secret, a separate dwelling unit, you know? And, and we've dealt with this, you know, recently in a number of, you know, other cases with homes where, you know, where you wind up having these, this kind of combination of, of uses within a, you know, within a living area, you know? So you have the separate bathroom, you have a separate living area, you have, you know, a separate, you know, what could constitute, you know, cooking facilities, which, you know, could trigger that from a zoning perspective, but then whenever we look at it from a building code perspective, you know, we don't have a separate unit, you know, per se. I mean, when you come at it from a building code perspective, now we're looking for, you know, we're looking for fire separations, we're looking for, you know, a host of other code requirements that, you know, that go, you know, that go beyond that.
Yeah, I just need, I just want some kind of baseline to work with when we evaluate this. Now, I'm going to go skip everybody for a minute, go to Lauren. Lauren, did you want to make a comment with regard to our discussion on cooking facilities right now?
Um, yeah, I guess my comment has, I guess I have two little comments. One is that in my research, I can hear the issue you guys are addressing, so I'm sure you'll address it, but I, in my research, I was told that cooking facilities were defined as a stove, so that was something that I was told by the town prior.
They were not, I'm sorry, say that again?
That a stove is what constitutes a cooking facility. And so that's just the information I was given. And then the other thing is that, you know, I noticed, like, so we have two teenage boys, and like, for them, like, like having a mini-fridge and a microwave in their bedroom is like a convenience, like, it's like a dorm room. And so I, I just noticed, like, oh, people do that in their offices, and they do that in their spaces, and it's not, they're not living in those spaces because they can't really live effectively on those items. So it just sort of seems to me like I can't see that satisfying requirements that someone would need to live in a space for a long time. And it's not my intention that anybody be cooking in my space. I don't want anybody cooking in the, in that room, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And what about the parking, Lauren? We heard Warner refine on that. Where is the yes going to park?
So right now, our driveway, which was refinished, was kind of expanded at the very end, so straight in, there's like room for four cars to park at the back of the driveway next to each other.
Okay. All right, so that, did I hit everybody? Jim asked a question. April, do you have any other questions, April?
Um, I don't think I have questions. We just probably want to go through the...
Yeah, we'll discuss.
The performance standards, make sure that she understands all the rules.
Yep.
One other thing you could, one other thing you could think about is, is the microwave built in, or is it just sitting there on the counter?
It's sitting on the counter.
Okay, that's great. Karen, do you have anything else you want to ask at this time? Yeah, I'm sorry, you're muted.
My dog was barking in the background.
Oh, thank you.
We make note in a butter letter.
I'm going to get to this when we're done with the applicant. So nothing else for Karen right now?
Nothing for me.
And nothing else for you, Jim? Nothing for Jim. And nothing else for you, April?
Not at the moment.
Okay, then we're gonna, Lauren, we're going to keep your mic off for a minute, and we're gonna, if we need to talk to you more, we'll bring you back, Lauren. And Dave, can you tell me, is there anybody else that's out there? I, I haven't got a thing on the side of my screen to tell me if there's anybody there.
We only have two attendees, and neither has their hand up.
Okay, well, then I guess what I will do is ask, are there any direct abutters at this time who is an attendee who would like to make a comment or address the board with regard to the application? I guess I look to you, Dave. Nobody right now with regard to?
No hands up.
No hands up, okay. So then I'm going...
The attendees are Catherine Tenney and Sheila Matthews-Bolt.
Okay. So I know Sheila's here as our liaison to the board, only if she wants to be. I don't, I don't see a need if she doesn't want to.
I'll let her put her hand up if she wants to be.
Right. And then, is the other attendee, is that a relative of yours, Lauren? Okay. So there's no direct abutter here, so I'm going to close that part of our hearing, and then next is members of the general public. Is there anybody who's listening, who's a member of the general public who wishes to have the board hear comments made by them? No hand...
There's a phone-in caller, and they're the only two attendees of those two, so there's nobody else.
Okay, so there's nobody else. So, all right, then if there's nobody who wants to speak with regard to the general public, then I'm going to close that portion of our hearing. So at this time, then, unless the board, when we have our discussion, if we, unless we have some questions for Lauren, then we will, I'm going to close the hearing but for that possibility of going back to Lauren to answer some additional questions. And I'm going to now move over to the board for us to review the application. So I'm going to lead by, instead of ticking off through all of the standards, I'm just going to go to the one that seems to be of minor interest, which is number one under 714B1, which provides no separate kitchen or cooking facilities are provided for or used by the roomers. That's the language of the ordinance. So I think, I'm, I'm curious about, does, do any of you think that what exists there qualifies as a kitchen? Karen?
I do not feel so qualifies as a kitchen, but others that we've approved have really only been a bedroom.
Yeah. Jim?
I feel the same way. It's, so far, everything that we've seen has just been a bedroom.
Okay, and April? Same?
Same.
All right, so what do you want to do about that? Do we need to, do some of you feel that we need to condition a potential improvement, approval on some kind of modification to what's offered? Karen? In other words, the microwave is removable from what Lauren has said. Do you find it problematic? Well, let me tell you my initial thoughts before you answer that. The reason I asked Warren about what constitutes a residential unit and the necessity for cooking facilities in a residential unit was just to give us something to contrast it by... was just to give us something to contrast it by, something to put it against. And from my understanding, initially, if I wanted to get a certificate of occupancy for a residential unit, I gotta have some kind of stove or at least stove top there, something that sounds like it's not a hot plate. So it's not, it's gonna be some kind of permanence that's in the unit. I'm not saying that that's our standard here, but I needed to, I needed to shine some kind of light on it from my own personal consideration. But then if it was in some kind of condominium, Warner, is this right? If it was like a condo unit, there's some kind of, that wasn't allowed to have kitchen facilities, would a microwave be allowed in a condominium unit or a hotel unit? In a hotel unit that isn't allowed to have cooking facilities? Could they, could they have a fridge and could they have a microwave?
So, you know, interestingly enough, we have a section in the ordinance that talks about, you know, when a hotel, you know, when a hotel room has, you know, a kitchenette. And, you know, so, because this question has come up before, you know, you know, and the, the language, you know, for the hotels, you know, when, when you've got a hotel room that has a kitchenette, you know, the ordinance makes it pretty clear that it's, you know, those situations there are not to be construed as dwelling units. You know, just because of the presence of, you know, the presence of the cooking facilities there, you know, doesn't necessarily make, you know, does not make it a dwelling unit. Now, I suspect, you know, and then there's also occupancy limits that go along with that. I suspect that language is in there was primarily to prevent folks from, you know, living long-term in a hotel with a, you know, with a kitchenette and using that to qualify as their, you know, as their legal residence. You know, I suspect that's why that language is in there. But, you know, my thought is that if, you know, if there's language in the ordinance that specifically addresses, you know, of how it shouldn't be construed, then, you know, it indicates to me that, you know, it anticipates that you're going to have hotels with kitchenettes in them, you know, that you're going to have, you know, situations where you're gonna have a hotel room that has, you know, you know, a coffee pot and, you know, and a microwave and a mini fridge. You know, and it's just the ordinance is being clear that those are not separate, you know, that those are not separate dwelling units.
I'm not sure if that clarifies things or it muddies things a little bit, but that's okay. It is what it is.
Well, I think, you know, the, the question is, I understood is, you know, would you let, you know, would you let a hotel room have a, you know, have, you know, a microwave, you know, and a microwave and a coffee pot, you know, and a mini fridge in it? You know, and, you know, my answer is, is that the ordinance anticipates that that is, you know, is a potential. You know, and so I see that as a permissive thing, that because the ordinance anticipates that that, you know, that that could occur, that it, it's a, it's, it's permissive. And so, you know, I, you know, we have situations here in town where hotels have, you know, have kitchens. But because of the use, they're declared to not be, you know, dwelling units. So obviously a different situation here. But you, you can have hotels in Kennebunkport with, you know, with, you know, the type of setup that we're seeing here.
Okay, is, is, then if we're just stuck on this language, is there a definition of cooking facility somewhere in the ordinance? I don't think there is, but is there?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll take a look, but I don't, I don't think we have it.
So, so, members of the board, I guess the question is, does a sink, a fridge, and a microwave constitute cooking facilities? To each of you, because I think it's gonna come down to us defining the term cooking facilities. I'm, I'm interested in what you have to say about, and I don't know if I'm being repetitive or not, but maybe it just wasn't clear to me before. Karen, do you consider the microwave, the sink, and the fridge to constitute cooking facilities? Which is, I think, an undefined term in the ordinance.
I do not. I feel it's more of a convenience.
James? Same question.
Only if you're eating more than popcorn and drinking a beer. I would say you're, it's more of a convenience.
And April?
I can go along with that if we make some kind of notation in the approval that, that she can't have long-term renters in that space. That this is for, you know, short-term rentals, a week, a couple of days, what have you. It's not a year-round rental property. I would want that condition to be put in there if I'm gonna leave microwaves and sinks in that room.
So what, are you asking that there'd be, not a notation, but a requirement or a condition that if approved, that the unit not, when you say long-term, that can be defined as a month, six months, or a year? Are you talking more about six months or a year, April?
Yes. Yes. So it doesn't turn into a dwelling even? I mean, there are some people who don't cook and who could live perfectly fine with just a microwave. So, and personally, after 35, 40 years of cooking, I could probably live fine with them. Sometimes. But kids live in dorm rooms and they just have microwaves and so forth, and they live fine as well. So I just don't want this to turn into an apartment.
Gotcha.
Because it could totally become an apartment because it's separate, above a garage. They really would never have to come in the house and could be pretty self-sufficient up there. And that's not what this is. That's not what this is permitted for, I'm sure. I'm sure Warner, you know, there's, there's a reason why this wasn't turned into an apartment, I guess. I don't know. But it would certainly have to be permitted as a separate dwelling unit, and it's not.
Okay.
So that's my, that's my issue.
Warner, you were gonna, did you find anything on whatever I, question I asked you? Was it cooking facility? No definition of that, right?
Yeah, I mean, the closest thing that we have, you know, is within the building code. You know, the building code, you know, is kind of also gen, you know, is equally vague in the sense that, you know, it defines it, you know, as a kitchen is, kitchen shall mean an area that's used or designed for the preparation of food.
That's singularly unhelpful, but good, no. The, can I ask you another question?
Excuse me, out of the cloud, out of the cloud, sometimes the obvious really kind of appears. And in this case, just a moment ago, it did. Why don't we just take the microwave out?
That's certainly an option, so we'll consider that when we finish this. I wanted to ask Warner, based on what April was saying, do you know, Warner, if there's a definition in the, in our ordinance of, were you saying long-term rental, April? You want to make sure that there's no long-term rental. I, I understand you and I could talk about six to 12 months, but I want to make sure there's no pre-existing, an existing definition in the ordinance before we go down that. Do you know of one, Warner? Long-term rental, short-term rental, is that defined?
No, no, so I mean, right now, I mean, we just define, you know, well, you know, as, as most folks know, you know, we've been talking a lot about, you know, short-term rentals in town, specifically, you know, dealing with whole-house rentals. But I think, and that's part of the issue, is that there's no defined timeframes, you know, you know, within the ordinance.
Okay.
We generally understand those to be, you know, 30 days or less, you know, is kind of what the industry standard is for, you know, for what's considered a short-term rental. But that's not defined in ordinance.
Okay, thank you. So, and if something's not defined in the ordinance, and my understanding is that when a term comes up and it's not defined in the ordinance, it's up to this board to define the term if it's placed before this board.
Well, I think long-term rental is like a residential unit, a residential unit.
Yep.
So it would be a two-unit house as opposed to a one-unit house renting out a bedroom.
Right. But I just want to make, I want to, I understand what you're asking for, and I just want to make sure that we don't trip over ourselves if we incorporate anything like that based on other definitions that might have existed already.
Yeah, I, I do just, I want to throw out a, you know, kind of a hypothetical scenario though, you know, just, you know, to keep in mind is that, you know, we do have, we do have folks, you know, in town who have, you know, who may have a roommate, you know, in their house, you know, and where they share, you know, where they share living expenses. And so, you know, I don't think in what, you know, I don't think what we're saying is that it's, you know, the intent of if somebody has a roommate, you know, or they, you know, so take this situation here, you have a long-term, you know, arrangement with a roommate and they happen to have a microwave in their room. I don't, I'm not hearing that they, the intent is to not, you know, let somebody do that. Because in those situations, you know, that roommate has full, typically has full access to all of the areas of the house, right? You know, like they have full access to the, you know, to the, to the kitchen and to all areas of the house because they share all those living areas. But I just, you know, I want to make sure that that's, you know, that we recognize that as a different situation than what we have going on here.
I, I think we do because that person would have reached to the whole of the house. So that's a whole different ball of wax, I think.
Right, because I don't think, I don't think that you and, that Mrs. Tenney intends to let this, the rumor have full access to her house.
Let's go to Lauren for a minute, if we could unmute Lauren for a minute.
Hi.
Lauren, do you have, is the, is you, is the residential rental accommodation that you're envisioning, they're not, are they going to have access to the remainder of the house or no?
During COVID times, no.
Anytime, during anytime.
It's not my intention, but I have, prior to there being an ordinance for a rumor, well, it was actually like, I think, the year before that ordinance came into effect, I did my, a bedroom in my house on Airbnb and I had people in my house and I, and I enjoyed it. It was fun, actually. So I've had, I've had that experience. Now I have small children, so it's not my intention. But I've done it too, so I'm sort of, yeah, I think to the point you guys are interested in, no. I'm not planning on that for this usage. And my inclusion of a microwave is, microwave is purely a convenience. I do not want long-term renters and I do not want cooking in the home. And I do want my teenage stepsons to be able to be up there and microwave stuff. And I don't really want to have to carry a microwave back and forth, so that's really why I have it up there.
But you don't, if the, my next question was, and I think you just answered it, you don't, you don't particularly have any kind of issue if the period of time for any singular renter was affixed at, you know, a period of less than a month?
Doesn't bother me. That's, my intention is not to have long-term residents living in that room.
And if, and if it came down to the microwave itself, while you would prefer not to carry a microwave about the house, that's not, you're not insisting that you be allowed to maintain the microwave in the unit?
I would really like to maintain the microwave in the unit. I would. I, I don't know that I can insist anything here, but I would like to be able to do that. And based on what I've heard you all say, it sounds to me like if I were not allowed to keep the microwave, there would be a, a more punitive view taken of my room than a hotel room. And that doesn't initially seem equitable to me, so that crosses my mind, yeah.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, and my response would be we're not reviewing a hotel room.
Right, but I thought the, my understanding was the rumor ordinance was basically a way of saying people in this town want to, we want to enable residents in the town to benefit from being able to rent a room because we have a town where people want to visit. So I'm just, I'm just trying to participate with that.
Yep, I, I think that that's a correct statement, but I also think we're not reviewing a hotel room at this moment. Okay, thank you for answering those questions. You can put, I do want to digress for one minute because Karen pointed out something earlier and I passed over it and I should incorporate it before. Karen, were you talking about an email that you received? You're muted again.
Barking dog in the background. An email that we all received from an abutter.
So-
Present tonight.
Right, I'm gonna note two things with regard to that. We did receive an email from an abutter, the abutter is Sarah. So this is a writing that was submitted to the board. I also want to note that the rules of, of our board preclude us from, it doesn't preclude us, it, it requires that if you want to submit a writing to the board for its consideration, that needs to be received seven days prior to hearing. So absent being received seven days, and there's a good reason to have that so we're not inundated with written materials from people, you know, the day before a hearing. So everybody was free to read the email that was submitted by Sarah, but the date on that was October 25. And I believe that our rules provide that we need to receive something in writing at least seven days prior to the hearing. So for that reason, I'm not gonna read it into the record, but I'm acknowledging that we received that. And did you get that, Jim? And you got that, April?
Yes.
So you received it, you're free to read it if you want to, you're free to incorporate the thoughts, but I'm not going to enter it into the record in any way because it wasn't received within the deadline. And I'm, I'm pretty firm on holding that deadline for the obvious reason that if we have a significantly contested hearing, that I don't want the board to be inundated with written materials with too short a period of time to review them prior to a hearing. So I think it benefits the board and it also sets some parameters for people who want to participate. That said, anybody who has anything to say can appear at any hearing and as a member of the public or as a direct abutter can always voice everything that they might write down if they so choose. So that's just me on that. So back to deliberation, so let's work through the other ones for a minute and then come, circle back to the kitchen one more time. No sign located on the premises advertising the availability of rooms for lease or rent to rumors. I believe that's the case. We haven't heard anything direct on that. Lauren, is there gonna be a sign placed up anywhere with regard to this?
No, no signs.
No alteration or change of the dwelling unit in its exterior appearance is made to accommodate the presence of rumors. We haven't heard of any alteration or change that needs to be done to the exterior or will be done to the exterior. That's correct, Lauren?
Correct.
Thank you. Bedroom's gonna be, that would-be rent is gonna be inspected by code, code officer, and shall have code-compliant smoke and common monoxide detectors in addition to complying with current building code requirements for primary and secondary means of escape. So that inspection has not occurred. So we don't have anything from, that hasn't occurred yet, Andrew or Warner, right? You haven't inspected the place yet, right?
So, you know, so this, this home is a relatively new home. And the addition is a, is a relatively new addition, you know, from a review of, you know, of the building file, which Andrew and I both did. It's, you know, the permit for the garage with the bedroom was issued in 2019, and so a final inspection, you know, was done, you know, at the end of, of 2019. It did have a, it did have a condition, you know, it was a conditional final inspection, you know, but, you know, the item that we're missing, you know, when we reviewed the records as of, as a minor item, we were looking for, there was an insulation certificate that was not present at the, at the final inspection, which, you know, that's something that, you know, that we can discuss with Lauren as far as what exactly that needs to look like. But otherwise, you know, it was, you know, per the records that we had, you know, it was inspected at the end of 2019 as part of that building permit application.
So you're satisfied, even though you still have time to do the inspection, because I would technically follow this, follow this hearing, and if it was approved, but as far as a primary and a secondary means of escape, can you, have you looked at that already, or that's something you will look at?
And that's some, that's something that we'll confirm, you know, I mean, we'll go, you know, you know, as per the requirements, you know, in the ordinance here, we'll do an inspection, you know. I've not been, you know, I've not been in the home, and, but so if everything is as per the submitted building, you know, the building plans, you know, your secondary means of egress out of a bedroom is always going to be the, you know, the egress window as, you know, as part of any permit application, and your primary means of egress is this, you know, unobstructed path that doesn't take you through any, it doesn't take you through the garage, you know, that, but basically that takes you down a set of stairs out into, I believe from looking at the plans, it should go like into a mudroom area, you know, or connector there that takes you to a door, you know, that leads directly to the outside, you know. That's the, that's the primary means of egress that we would be looking for as it relates to code compliance.
All right, thanks, Warren. Next requirement is the rooms occupied by the rumors do not have a separate entrance from the outside, and I think that I was satisfied with the testimony that that's the case. Does anybody disagree with that, or have any questions on that? No? I'm, I saw three heads shaking, Noah, April, Jim, and Karen. Next is the requirement that the rumors use utilities which are not separately metered from those used by the remaining occupants of the dwelling unit, and we didn't hear directly on that, Lauren. The, there's no separately metered utilities for this room, correct?
I think, Warner, you might have to clarify, I know the electricity is not separately metered, but I think when they put the water line in running up, they had to put a separate water one in because they couldn't tap into the line that went into our house. Do you happen to know that?
You know, so I, I haven't been in your home, so I can't speak directly to it, but what we're, we're, so whenever you look at your home, do you have one meter on the outside of the house, or do you, do you have two meters?
I think I have one. I honestly don't know.
Yeah, or, or do you know, do you have, do you have one panel box, or do you have two panel boxes in the house?
You mean an electric panel?
Yes.
I have one in this house, that's in the main house downstairs, and then there's one in the utility room in the garage. Because we added the garage on, so when they did that, they had to tap into our water line and our electrical line. You know, we have one electric meter for the whole property. I thought that Noah told me that there was a separate water because of where we connected to the sewer line, but I honestly don't have, I'm not clear about that.
Lauren, how many water bills do you get?
I get one water bill.
One water bill. How many electrical bills do you get?
One.
One electrical bill. That satisfies me, anybody else on that? Karen?
Yeah, I'm good on that.
Jim? And April?
I'm good on that.
Okay.
Well, while we're asking water or electricity, sewer as well, right? One sewer bill?
One sewer bill?
One sewer bill.
One sewer bill. Number eight says, one off-street parking space per room rented shall be required as per Article 6106, and I think that's been addressed already at this time. And the owner of the residential rental accommodation shall remain in the residence while rooms are being rented. We didn't hear directly from Lauren on that, so let's go to Lauren on that. Lauren, when you're renting this room out, you will be, at the time the room is rented, you will be in the main residence at that time?
That's my intention.
Thank you. So that brings us back to the kitchen, guys.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Do you rent the main house at all through an Airbnb? No, okay.
I didn't say what I thought about the kitchen stuff, and we'll talk about it. I don't, I was asking my questions of Warner to try to get some kind of baseline, I kind of quasi got it, but to me, since kitchen and cooking facilities aren't specifically designed, I don't personally consider a mic, well, I agree with April that you could survive on a microwave. I have one sister that survives on a microwave. So I know it can be done, but I don't consider that to be cooking myself. Maybe I just have a higher standard of the home-cooked meal, I don't know, but, so I don't get, I don't have hot burn on a microwave and a, and a fridge, personally. To me, that doesn't qualify as a cooking facility, but that's just me. So what would you like to do with, that seems to be, does anybody have any concern whatsoever, and by that I mean April, Jim, and Karen, with regard to meeting any of these requirements but for requirement number one, kitchen or cooking facilities? Is everybody comfortable with all the other requirements? Karen?
She answered the questions on record, so yep, I'm okay with them.
Jim?
Same.
April?
Yes, you know, the letter, I did read the letter from the neighbor who did say that some of the times when that room was being rented, that Ms. Tenny was not at the house. So we need to just make sure that she understands the rules, that when you rent that room out, you need to be living and staying in the house, you can't be elsewhere when that room is being rented.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I was going to ask if the letter was a matter of public record or available to me or not anyway, and maybe you can also tell me if that's true, because I would love to know.
So the, to the question, though, Lauren?
The answer to the question is, maybe you guys could just help me understand exactly what the rule means, so I know how to follow it, which is.
Yeah, the rule means that if you're renting out the room.
Right.
You have to be in the primary residence.
Who has to be in the primary residence? Me, what about my husband? What about my adult children? Like, does someone have to be in the home? Is that the intention? Or do I have to be in the home?
Well, you're.
The owner has to be in the home.
Okay.
And the owner has to be in the home. Who's the homeowner?
Me and my husband.
And that's who would need to be in the home.
Okay, and just to clarify, so if I have the room rented for a period of time when I'm present, and then I have to travel for work, and my husband is visiting his family for one of those nights, does that constitute me breaking the rule because one of the nights that are rented, I'm not present?
That would, in my opinion, in my opinion, it would, yes. Jim? Sorry, we didn't get that, Jim.
I agree, that is, that would be my opinion as well.
April?
I agree, it's a violation of the rule.
Karen?
Same here, because you are supposed to be in the home supervising the rental. It's not a freestanding apartment, it's not a hotel.
So that's the intention of the ordinance, just so that I understand, the intention is that the rumor is being supervised by the homeowner?
I can't.
Supervised, you don't need to watch what they're doing, but you need to be in control of your property.
Got it.
We didn't write the ordinance, Lauren, and we just.
Yeah, I just want to understand.
And, I mean, the requirement, I'm just going to go over that for clarity.
Number nine.
Thank you. The owner of the residential rental accommodation shall remain in the residence while rooms are being rented. It's pretty clear.
Because I think there's a fine line of whether this is renting a room, or if it's an accessory apartment.
So, so I think we've got that clarity there, so, all right, how do you folks want to deal with the, the kitchen issue? I myself don't have an issue, but I'm open to hearing everything that you guys have to say, or require, or otherwise. So April, you have said that what you would like to require as a condition is that, as a condition of approval, that there be no long-term rental, and I'd like the long-term a little bit better defined, but Lauren, the applicant, has said that she's comfortable with that being, you know, no rental either as long as a month or longer than a month. Does that meet what you're looking for, April?
Yes.
So would it be that, oh, less than one month's time? Is that what you're looking for?
Sure, thirty days or, thirty days or less, and I don't have a problem leaving the microwave in the room as long as that condition is there.
Okay. So, Jim, so if there's a condition that the room not be rented for longer, that, for no more than thirty days or less, does that satisfy any issue you may have with regard to cooking facilities that, well, what exists there, I'm not going to call them cooking facilities, but what exists there, the microwave, the sink, and the fridge?
I had no problem to begin with.
Okay. And Karen?
Yeah, I felt as though the microwave was a convenience, not a cooking facility, so I'm okay with that.
Okay, and I, I feel the same way, so I'm, I have no worries about the microwave or the fridge being there, but I don't have a problem with April's condition either, because I think that still serves the purpose of the ordinance. So, does anybody else need to talk about anything else with regard, in, in the context of this application?
Probably the one other thing we should remind her is that she can only rent, turn over the room once a week, so if you rent it for two days, like, say, Saturday and Sunday, or Friday and Saturday, can't rent it again to different people until the following Friday, because you can only rent it, can only turn over once a week, which is also a condition of the ordinance. So you can't rent it Friday and Saturday to one person, and then Wednesday and Thursday of the same week to a different person.
And it states that in the ordinance?
Yes.
Can, sorry, I was not aware of that. Can you read that to me?
It's in the definition section.
I got it, should I read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
I got it.
Go ahead, Karen.
Want me to read it?
April, go.
Go ahead, April.
The permitted accessory use of no more than two bedrooms in a legally existing dwelling or dwelling unit. This dwelling unit shall be an owner-occupied dwelling. Rooms rented may be for either short-term or long-term rental to a rumor who may be unrelated to the owner occupant of the unit. Individual rooms shall be rented no more than once per week. For purposes of this section, a week shall be defined as Monday through Sunday.
Would you, would any of you, I know you didn't write the ordinance, would you be able to speak to what that's intending to safeguard?
No.
And where would I go to understand that?
I'm not sure when the ordinance was drafted, and I'm not sure who drafted that provision of the ordinance, I don't know how to direct it.
I believe, I believe the intent was a lot of turnover to the neighborhood, a lot of cars coming in and out, a lot of changeover. The whole purpose was to be able to rent one or two rooms in your house, and we thought it was probably best, because we did have feedback during the creation of the ordinance, that people don't want a lot of cars going in and out, strangers every day, that type of thing, so.
It probably came from comprehensive plan committee, or growth planning committee, as in allowed use to let some homeowners have some income producing without it being heavy impact to abutters and neighbors.
Yeah, the reason I, the reason I ask is because it, in our community, where the seasonality of renting is quite short, and it is for the summer months, that, that specification of the ordinance, ordinance is tantamount to having, or more than, more than halvily reducing what a, what a homeowner could earn on a room. And so it seems to me like if the other criteria in the ordinance are met by the space, and that there isn't a parking impact on the road, and all the other things are up to snuff, that it would be, it's, it's, seems unduly punitive to a homeowner to require that when other homes and units can be rented multiple times per week, so, like, I notice that I'm, I think, oh, wow, there's some inequity there, where do I take that up? Do I go to meetings about short-term rentals? Like, where does that issue get addressed by town citizens who discover that maybe that, there's other perspectives that should be considered on that?
You might want to, I mean, I, I don't, personally, I don't think that it's, it's really not possible to define it any other way, I mean, it's kind of black and white, so if you have a problem with a provision in the ordinance, then I would think that your avenue would be that you follow the mechanism that may be available to amend the ordinance. And that, I'm, I'm, I don't have that method down, but I do know that has to be approved by, does it start with the planning board and then go to the selectmen, or does it go to the selectmen?
It usually goes, it usually goes to the growth planning committee, change, and then it's approved by the selectmen, or it goes to a vote in June.
It still has to go to a town vote, final.
It has to go to a town, a townwide vote to amend the ordinance. But there's a mechanism by which, if you have a problem with anything, or you think something should be added to the ordinance, that there are, there's a means to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, you could show up, you could show up at a growth planning committee meeting and speak to your issues about it.
There is also a short-term rental committee?
And that, I think there is, I think there is a short-term rental committee.
There is.
Yeah, there's your, there's your, there's your place.
But we don't write the ordinance, Lauren, we just.
Just make recommendations or?
Well, we have, no, we don't even do that unless somebody comes.
We have to go by the print.
We just, we have to go by the black letter of the law, and we, we interpret it when necessary, but that doesn't appear to be requiring interpretation.
Right, heard, yeah.
But it does raise one question, so. I wanted to go back.
Because of this, we, I just want to make sure that you understand that, that this is the rules now, and that you need to follow them if we grant you this application.
I understand that.
So April, I want to go to you for one minute, when we read the definition just now, where it says in the second sentence, the dwelling unit shall be owner-occupied dwelling, sorry, third sentence, rooms rented may be either for short-term or long-term rental. So since that's specifically allowed, the reasoning for your condition is that you have an issue with the microwave constituting cooking facilities, and you'd be satisfied if that was, if there was a restriction, then you wouldn't have your issue with the cooking, what you interpret as cooking facilities, the microwave.
Right, it's either one or the other, as far as I'm concerned. Either we have no cooking facilities, then it doesn't matter how long the person stays there, or. or if we have cooking facilities, then we need, then it can't be long-term because we don't want to make this a, another residential unit. That's my problem.
I'm going to go to the applicant for a minute. Lauren, in order to have your application approved, then you need a majority of the members of the board. Not a majority of the members that are in attendance tonight, but you need a majority of the members of the board. It's a seven-person board. So you need all four votes this evening to have your application approved. And so not all the members of the board, as you have been able to observe, view the microwave in the same context. So in order to satisfy the valid interpretation of April as to what, what the microwave, how that impacts on cooking facilities, if you had a choice of either removing the microwave and having no time restriction placed on the rental of the unit or keeping the microwave but allowing for a restriction of the time to be 30 days or less, which one of those two do you prefer?
Like I said before, I have no desire to have a long-term rental situation, so I would prefer that the condition on the time and the space gets to just stay the way it is with a microwave sitting on the counter.
Very good, and that's going to satisfy you, right, April?
Yes.
Great, so anything else, members of the board? So I, I'd like somebody to pose a motion, but I would like the motion to include that there will be a condition that the room may be rented for a period of 30 days or less. Already built in, and we don't have to add it as a condition, is that there will be an inspection by code to make sure that everything is conforming. And I don't, I don't know if there was any other, I think we don't need to make it a condition of a motion that all the provisions of the ordinance continue to be met, such as the owner be present during rental, because that's just a requirement. We don't need to repeat it because it is a requirement. Do you agree with that, Karen?
Yep.
And Jim? And April?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the residential rental application of Lauren Tenny with the condition that the room be rented for no longer than 30 days.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have it seconded. Any further discussion on the motion?
Can I just make a...
We have Warner. No, you're all done, Lauren. Warner?
Just, just to clarify, you're not placing a limit on a total of 30 days. You know, you're, you're placing a limit on...
Any individual renter.
On individual rental, so per tenant period.
Correct. Let's add, can we, we're going to add, may I like to move to amend the motion that we add to April's language, 30 days or less per tenant.
Per tenant.
Okay, and can that be seconded, the amendment?
Second.
Okay. All right, then I'm, I'm ready to go to a vote. So we'll do this one at a time. All those, this is going to be whether or not, if you are in favor of the motion, are you in favor of the motion as amended? Karen?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And I am as well, so the motion passes and the application is granted with the sole additional condition that no individual tenant rent for a period of, for no more than 30 days. Well, actually, I'm sorry, any tenant can rent limited to 30 days or less. Okay, and then you'll work some magic with that, Karen?
I will.
Okay, Lauren, thanks, thanks for working with us. Thanks for coming before us. I'd like the board to stick around for one minute if I could. Thank you, Lauren, you can, Dave, you can, thank you, Dave. So that's the end of that. Thanks for everybody, but I wanted to say one item that we don't have on the agenda and I don't see it as nicely fitting into the next hearing, which I expect to be time-consuming if anything, is that we need to have elections again on the board for the chair, the vice chair and the secretary. I think there's no question that we've struck gold with our secretary. Anybody else who wishes to be secretary could leap forward. So I, we can't real, you know, we can't do it now because we're just talking about it and we can't do it, I don't want to do it the next hearing because I think we're going to be up to our eyeballs in time on the next hearing. Do you guys all agree with that?
Yes.
So I think we need to do it, the subsequent hearing to that. So we'll make it an agenda item and you can think about, I'm happy to serve again. I am very happy to step down too. So whatever the pleasure the board is. And I know Wayne is presently the vice chair. So it's me, Wayne and Karen and the chair, vice chair and secretary. Anybody else who really is really interested might have some success, I'm just saying. Okay, that's all I got, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Warner and Andrew, Andrew, very nice to have you on board. This is your first visit, right? And you're in the official room back there, very impressive.
Yeah. Yeah, this is my first time for the ZBA, correct?